Okay, we're gonna go and get started. Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools School Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 11th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, thank you. Laura, roll call, please.
Mueller, Severson.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Samrai.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
And Superintendent Kathy Kelly.
Here.
Okay, thank you Laura. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we're gonna start the evening off with our Highlander highlights. The board will honor Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and the Outdoor Classroom for receiving the Minnesota Community Education Association Project Award.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here this evening with Wes Nutrin, who is the Columbia Heights Public Schools Agriculture Specialist as of the middle of June, and also Brett Carlson. He's the Director of Community Education for North Branch Public Schools, and he's also the Region Six Representative for the Minnesota Community Ed Association.
Thank you. Good evening, thanks for having me here. It's an honor to be here, and probably one of the most fun parts about being on the MCEA Board of Directors is that I get to also go through the awards and select which ones win, so I get to see a lot of different things, and North Branch gets to benefit from that because I try to steal those ideas and bring them back to our school. And one of them that I'm gonna steal for sure is this project that I understand it's celebrating, it's 10-year anniversary, and it's just an amazing project when you think about what we try to do in Community Ed and really engage people outside of the K-12 system. You know, I always think it's pretty natural for schools to engage students in K-12, but sometimes it's harder to engage the community. In this project, this project does that. From early learners to adults to ELL students, it really runs the gamut, and it involves so many different people, and it was really cool to read about, but really the coolest part for me is there was a group of us in September that met here as Community Ed Directors, and we met at nine o'clock, and I remember Kristen came running in just a few minutes before and said, "I'm so sorry, there's gonna be a fire drill at 9:15, so it's gonna interrupt our meeting." Lucky for me, I got to actually see Wes in action, and I got to see the Blooming Garden, I wanna call it, Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and Outdoor Classroom, live and in person, and I remember standing out there, and the fire alarm is still going on and going on and going on, but you would never know that a fire alarm was going on, looking at Wes with this group of four and five-year-olds, however old they were, very, very young learners, they were so dialed in and so engaged, and I was telling Wes before we came up here, I don't know if they were looking at leaves or exactly what the lesson was, but they were definitely dialed in way more than they would have been in a traditional classroom, let alone if you had a fire drill going on. So really, just an awesome project, and congratulations Kristen to you and your Community Ed Department, and Wes and you for leading it and making this vision happen and continuing to grow the program. So it's just an honor to be here, and I'm gonna present you with this wonderful plaque on behalf of MCEA, so congratulations.
Kristen and Wes, you guys wanna come up here, and we'll have Xena get a picture of you guys with that plaque, if we could?
Thank you. We're good.
No, we're good. Kristen, good.
We just said okay. We're gonna do, they did all the work, so.
Sorry, I'm a sadistic person. Here we go. And I'm three-four. And then the hope is none of them fall asleep.
Okay, and before you walk away, we have also a certificate for Community Ed here, and I'm just gonna read a little quick thing. If I duplicate anything you talked about, I apologize, but the Minnesota Community Education Association Project Award is presented outstanding projects that have exemplified the concept of community education. A project is either a one-time event or an ongoing activity that is associated with community education program. The awards committee judged the applications based on the following criteria: cooperation and teamwork, use of resources, achievement of illustrating the principles of community education, and community impact. MCEA recognizes Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and Outdoor Classroom for meeting all areas of the criteria and being an outstanding program since its inception in October 2009. Blooming Heights is a Columbia Heights Public Schools program that uses school garden and nutrition programming to facilitate equitable experiences that engage all the senses while building the skills and knowledge necessary for cultivating a healthy life and planet. MCEA celebrates the many ways Blooming Heights facilitates lifelong and experimental learning within the school district, community, and the state of Minnesota. And with that, we have a certificate for Community Education, Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and Outdoor Classroom, in recognition of receiving the Minnesota Community Education Association Project Award for outstanding projects that have exemplified the concept of community education. Thank you for your dedication to students, staff, and community of the Columbia Heights Public School District. So.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're awesome. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. Thanks. Congratulations. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. Kristen, congratulations. You're awesome. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're awesome. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Kristen, thank you. 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 Thank you.
May I just say that we accept this as a whole school district because it is the superintendent's vision and the school board's support that enables Blooming Heights to continue and to flourish, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Thanks again for coming in, guys. Okay, next up would be the approval of our agenda. We'll start with a motion to move that forward.
I moved second.
Molly and Natty, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Announcements, November 19th at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. November 26th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. November 28th, Thursday, no school Thanksgiving. November 29th, Friday, no school. December 5th, so the Thursday, there'll be a joint meeting with the City of Columbia Heights City Council and the school board. That'll be at the public library. And then December 17th, so the Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board in the community room here. Next up, correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Any blue sheets? Okay, nothing for that. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, and then minutes of the October 8th and 22nd school board meetings, and the October 15th school board work session. We get a motion to move that forward, please.
So much.
Holla?
I can't.
And Molly. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Thank you. Discussion reports and information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Natty, if you don't mind going first.
Well, since I missed the last meeting, mine goes back in time a little bit, so don't be shocked about the things you hear, because we have had a while since we've had a meeting. So, the last time I was here was before homecoming. That was the last time. So, I got to take in the homecoming game, which was really fun, and the fireworks, and do all the bit. I think my highlight was being over at North Park for the parade of students, what do we call that?
The world tour.
The world tour, where the older students go back to all the elementary schools, and it is a gas. I saw a teacher take a picture with a group of seniors that were her very first first-grade class, and it was really cool to see that picture retaken, and the kids wanted to take the picture. So, it was fun to see how excited they were to take that picture with her. I had a chair meeting before this, I did a work session. Molly and I, which I'm sure you already announced, did a listening session at Columbia Academy and got to talk and meet a lot of parents that night, did a girls' tennis banquet and a lot of other conversations, so that's me, I think.
Okay, thank you. Laura, please.
Well, since our last board meeting here, I attended the monthly meeting over at 9:16, and probably the biggest item of note is that we're expanding the TAP program, and that's an onsite therapy for the ALCs, which is great. We had one therapist that worked between the multiple ALCs, but now we have one stationed at each one of the sites. One of the advantages to that is they can also work with the staff, as well as have a better relationship with all of the students that are in the school. So, one of the practices that they've been doing is going into each one of the classrooms and introducing themselves, and making sure that they had an open-door policy, and letting people know how that they can refer, they can either self-refer or maybe refer somebody else for maybe needing services. So, that's been really good. That is actually funded with the mental health money that was allocated a couple of years back, and so we're hoping that maybe that will actually be a continuing thing going forward. But presently, with some third-party billing, the program should be able to be maintained for at least the next two years at this level, which is good news. And then I attended the Subcommittee on Policy prior to this meeting.
All right, thank you. Holla?
I've had several conversations with community members.
Molly?
Yeah, I had a chance to watch a couple of the last adapted soccer games. They had a really exciting game in the playoffs, they lost in overtime, so it was really exciting. It was a growing year, and so it was fun to see them really come along and end up doing well in their last game. And just a shout-out to those coaches, the most patient people on the planet, they just do such a great job with a lot of children with a lot of high needs, and they really do well. Also saw a Columbia Academy girls' basketball game and attended the Alumni Foundation Dinner. That's it.
Thank you. I'm gonna start by correcting what I think I initially called as the November 11th meeting, and we'll officially say it's the 12th. Not sure why I was stuck on yesterday, but it's November 12th for the record. Make sure that's on camera. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, I did attend one of the Strikers matches, and I would concur when Molly talks about the coaches, all of the coaches, all the people involved with that program, it's just, there's so much going on besides just the game itself, but it was really fun to watch. I attended the Subcommittee Policy meeting prior to this and the chair meeting also before this meeting, so. And that is my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, I do. I also attended the Columbia Heights High School Alumni Scholarship Foundation Dinner, and it was another sold-out crowd. It was a great event. We are honoring the Alumni of Distinction this year, who happened to be John Larkin. Special thanks to everybody who makes it possible, the foundation and the high school. It's a lot of work, and all I can say is Columbia Heights students are better for it for the amount of scholarships that go to our deserving students, provided by the foundation, benefits all of them, so thank you. The E-12 Administration met for the first round of teachers' evaluations for the tenure track. We do that three times a year, and I want to give you a brief update on the partnership with Country Music Association Foundation, because that will be happening next week. The planning continues. Their site visit will be here in the district on Wednesday, November 20th. They'll be working primarily at the high school with some things going on at the district center. Our very fortunate students will be able to have an experience with six prominently-known songwriters at that time. They will do a songwriter's workshop and learn, kind of at the feet of the masters, and then later that evening, they'll go down to the Ordway Center for Performing Arts and be able to watch those performers, artists, the talents, perform on the Ordway stage. And even cooler, although we love the performing artists that are professional, one of our pre-professional performing artists will be performing onstage with them with a song that she has already written, and so we're very excited about that. The opportunity also extends to U.S. Bank, staff who will be collaborating with the Country Music Association as part of their volunteer service, and so we are very fortunate, and Brian tells me that the room will be ready. They're gonna come over and they're gonna paint the walls of our brand-new band room, as there'll be about 20 of them from various levels of the organization. And then the Country Music Association has also contributed to parts of the band room, so they've contributed to some of the cabinetry, some of the sound system, and then they were also, last spring, very nice to underwrite part of our New York City seminar. So, they've been wonderful partners, and we're very excited, but November 20th will also be another big day in the district for the high school and for Columbia Heights Public Schools for another reason, and that's because Hennepin Theater Trust will be sponsoring not one, but 46 of our students to go to Phantom of the Opera that evening, and we're gonna hear a little bit more about that later on the agenda, but you can tell I'm dancing in the house, this is the happy dance, so we look forward to hearing more about that in a few minutes. So, we are very fortunate, we have our hearts in the arts and Heights pride, because it's gonna be a wonderful day for many, many students in the district, thanks to so many wonderful collaborative partners. The administrative team participated in another session of PLC work, and the teachers are hard at it, and so the admin is trying to keep up with them, and I say that in a very positive way. The PLC Leadership Professional Development Team met with Michael Muffoni again for our In-Service Day, and the team is also reading a book called Amplify Your Impact: Coaching Collaborative Teams in PLCs at Work, and the admin team is using that as part of its lead and learn this year. And we met this morning, I got our assignments from Tara Tuckroll on what we had to do for our next lead and learn, but my goosebumps were that the entire room was engaged in really tracking and looking at what was going on in our PLCs in a way I've never seen it done before in this district, so it was very special, so thanks for everybody that's making that possible. The Columbia Heights Public School College Board Executive Leadership Team attended the National College Board Forum last week, and it's the national, so this forum focuses on college board governance, policies, and procedures, and special topics, and so each member that went is a voting member to one of the delegate assemblies. And it was a thrill to be there, it was a thrill to actually be thinking that you're setting governance policy for an organization like the College Board. It was just really intense, and the topics were wonderful. We're gonna be presenting to the admin team and to members of the high school and appropriate staff and plan for the next year. So, got back from that, and then we were, today I had a preliminary meeting with Denise Sunstrom and Bergen KDB on preliminary audit, so that will be happening at your school board work session next week, and the editors will be here in person to address the board and really go in-depth on that budget. And then I attended the School Board Subcommittee on Policy, the Licensed Labor Management and Management Meeting, the School Board Chair Meeting prior to today, not prior to today, prior to this meeting. And so, see, we're both locked on the 11th, so thanks for your time. I'm finally done.
I am gonna take a second, just go backwards, I wasn't gonna talk about the dinner, but I'll just mention a little bit, just for some clarification stuff. It was a wonderful evening, and I had a great time, except that the spotlight was pointed in my direction, and that's why I wanna at least talk about this. The Columbia Heights High School Alumni Foundation, the Scholarship Foundation, is a board of people that has, they give out scholarship every year. Historically, it's been, it started as $30,000 a year and $40,000, and now next year, I think we're gonna be giving out six different scholarships at $10,000 apiece, so $60,000. And that dinner is put on by the foundation in collaboration, as the superintendent mentioned, with the district, and there is a lot of people that do a lot of hard work to get that ready. I'm on that board, and so I'm aware of all the work that's done to put that together, but I think it's important to make sure that people just, they understand, it's kind of an odd year because of who the dinner is, the purpose of the dinner is to recognize people, get them to come and open up their checkbooks, obviously, because we want their money, but then at the same, well, they all know, but at the same time, what's been tied with it over the last, I think, 12 years, 13 years, has been a separate, completely separate committee within the district, picking an alumni of distinction based on criteria and things like that. The foundation has nothing to do with that, just like the foundation has nothing to do with deciding who gets the scholarships. We provide that money, and then there's people within the district that are making sure that the money gets to the people that are eligible for that this year. The exciting thing that's gonna happen is there's gonna be trade school scholarships, and that's a big part of that as a result of a significant donation that the foundation received at the dinner, well, prior to that, but at the dinner, we got a $400,000 donation to the foundation, and one of the, I'll call it a stipulation, with 400 grand, they can have stipulations, but the question was, is why are there not trade scholarships being made available? And it was an excellent question, and said, "Well, let's do it." So, that will be a piece of it as well, but I did wanna take a second and thank everybody that did all that hard work. It was a lot of fun. Again, a little bit awkward for me, being the spotlight as the Alumni of Distinction. It was very, it was an honor, but, so I kinda got to help plan my own party, I guess, if you will, but it went really well, people were very generous, it was a great time. But I want people to understand that the foundation has been around for many, many years with a specific focus, and it's tied with, it works in collaboration with a committee that picks people that they recognize each year, and it's been anything from, well, except for the one year, I think we just did a 10-year rollback and looked at the people that had been Alumni of Distinctions prior to that, but, so, thanks to everybody, it was a good time, and I just wanna take a second and just kinda clarify a couple of things for people there, so. And now, we'll keep moving forward. Next up would be our Indian Education Update. I think we have a couple people in the crowd that are gonna come join us.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm pleased to be here this evening with Cheryl Davies, who is the Committee Chair for American Indian Education Program, and Valerie Larson, who's our District American Indian Specialist. Of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for every learner, each and every learner, excuse me, all belong, all succeed, and this presentation really focuses on community and respect. This is an informational update, so we will not be back with governance questions. So, we wanted to come this evening and provide our annual American Indian Education Program update. The integral part of American Indian Education Program is our parent committee, it's really the heart and soul of the programming that we do. So, there are three main areas that the committee works on: goals and metrics, activities, and budget priorities. So, there are five goal areas for our state plan that we follow with the world's best workforce, and I'll tell you, the five goals have largely not changed from one year to the next. So, for example, the first goal is around early childhood education. Over the last three years, we've been able to offer fee waivers for the programs that have a fee for early childhood. Last year, we didn't have any requests for fee waivers, and our staff in the enrollment center are trained to ask and offer. This year, we've already looked at the list, and we're definitely going to be offering fee waivers. So, we set aside some of the funding for that. Our second goal is literacy for third-grade students, so proficiency. The American Indian Parent Committee has long conversations about where we're setting the bar and what our expectations are for rigor, and they have high expectations for their children, and as you can see, set really rigorous goals. So, 90% proficiency was the goal for last year, the note in the bottom, or that's for this upcoming school year, it was the same last year, and at the bottom, you can see when we polled third-grade American Indian literacy proficiency scores, we were at 88%. So, almost, and the committee decided to keep the same high bar. Goal three, closing achievement gaps, the goal is 10% or less of a gap, so that was the same goal last year, and we're at 24 and 21 respectively with math and reading, so some work to do there. Sometimes at some grade levels, there are two students, and sometimes there's maybe five, so with the cell size that small, it's different from year to year, but we really do focus, and that's largely, as you can see, there are the strategies, a lot of the work that Val Larson does, working directly with students, she's a trained check-and-connect mentor, and a lot of family outreach and support, and so she'll talk in a little bit. Goal area four, attaining college and career readiness, this is one that we launched last year. Students who are in those grade bands that can log on to online tools such as Khan Academy, we really wanted to track the students and get them on there. So, last year, we were able to get 65% of the students on, this year, Val's really working with our academic specialist and tracking them and making sure that we have 100%. And then our high school graduation rate, the parent committee sets that at 100%. We were able to attain that again last year for at least our fourth, maybe fifth year in a row, and the goal is again at 100%, and we're on track, Val's checking in with those students on a weekly basis. We also have federal funding, a smaller portion, that again supports students and cultural enrichment. So, overall, between the two budgets, we're looking at just over $43,000, small but impactful. Now, some of the funding and the strategies, if I go back, some of the strategies, we're braiding funding, so Title I might support the students, or, you know, General Fund might support the students, so we're always supplementing and adding to the programming. So, the fun part, we wanted to talk about some of the robust family activities and student activities that we offer. Anyone can talk?
So, some of the activities that we have are collectively designed and put together by the families, the parents, and sometimes even grandparents, and we also take our student input as well, and we'll put together and plan out, we try to plan out for the entire year, and we'll do that usually at the beginning of the year or in the spring, and we will also do some quarterly meetings with just the parents and our older grade-level students so that they can also be involved in drafting our bylaws, which are almost done, so that we have more guidance on what our meetings look like, although they're pretty well-guided, I suppose, and done. And then we also, so we have family events. We are trying to do a better job of ensuring that the family events are transparent and advertised on all of the district mediums, like our website, as well as we have all calls going out from Val and Xena and notices going home, and that's really helpful because I personally have noticed an increase in participation, and one of the things that I do like to see is that not only is it just the student and maybe a guardian attending a family event, you start to see the entire family coming. So, Native American families are often not this nuclear family that maybe people might be used to, mom and dad and a student, you start to see grandma coming along, or auntie and their cousin. so that we have more guidance on what our meetings look like, although they're pretty, um, well-guided, I suppose, and, um, done. And then we also, um, so we have family events. Um, we are trying to do a better job of ensuring that the family events are transparent and, uh, advertised on all of the district mediums, like our website, as well as we have all calls going out from Val and Xena and, um, notices going home. And that's really helpful because I personally have noticed a increase in participation. And one of the things that I do like to see is that not only is it just the student and maybe a guardian attending a family event, you start to see, um, the entire family coming. So, um, Native American families are often not this nuclear family that maybe people might be used to, mom and dad and a student. You start to see grandma coming along or auntie and their cousin. And all these support systems that are there for the student, they're also attending family events, which is great because it's not, um, just one guardian who's responsible for the student, it's the whole entire family. So I'm really impressed when we have our family events. We also have the community powwow, which is always a great time. And you can see a picture of some of the young gentlemen that were there last year. And one of the students wa- was holding a title this year. And he's a student here at Columbia Heights, so that's a great honor. Um, we have encore activities going on at Columbia Academy. My son attends Columbia Academy and attends those encore events and he loves it. Um, the cultural activities for the students, I have a granddaughter at Highland and so she's able to take part in some of the, those activities. She really enjoys when she's able to come home and talk about, um, her day with Ms. Val. And I can also see the curriculum that's being incorporated, um, just in, uh, the school district as a whole. So, um, I can appreciate that as a parent. Um, and then the professional development, I'll leave that for Val, um, that portion. But there's a lot of, um, activities that are going in with the budget, yeah.
So part of professional development for me this year was, I was honored to be able to represent Columbia Heights School District at the National Indian Education Association Conference. It was, it celebrated its fiftieth year and the conference actually started here in Minnesota through National Indian Education. Um, it was a huge con- conference. Um, people from all over the United States and, and, you know, were, were there. Um, they celebrated fifty, um, past presidents, um, many of whom showed up with their walkers. But, um, it was a really, it was a really enjoyable conference. I learned a lot. It was really nice to be with other Indian educators. And I participated in this, in the segments that were, um, community education and like check and connect. So I learned, you know, I learned more about how other school districts are working with parents and working with their students. Um, with check and connect, oh yeah, um, this was a really super good workshop. Um, it was one of the plenary sessions. And, um, as you can see, Cheryl, um, gosh, can you remember?
Senator Holland?
Yes, Senator De- Deborah Holland and,
Shanice.
Yeah, Shanice Davids. Um, the two women senators, legislators were there. And, um, to just, I was so inspired because they both, they all came from places where some of our Indian students, you know, come from, from families that are not too, not exactly whole, but maybe somewhat broken and, um, had, you know, issues in school, but decided to run for office and there they are. I, I was just, you know, it was amazing. And then, of course, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, um, also represented, she's, as you know, from White Earth Nation. And she represented at the conference and it was just, it was an awesome conference. Um, I feel like I learned a lot, particularly from other districts about counting students because our, you know, it's hard sometimes for our student counts when they're American Indian and with another, with another, um, ethnicity, like many of us are, we're not, you know, a hundred percent anything. So, um, but it was really interesting to see what other, um, other, you know, cities were doing and other school districts were doing to help me to get some ideas about how to do it, do it better and the best I can.
One thing Val's not mentioning is that when she walks into the room at this conference, everyone knows Val and, you know, the room kind of parts when they come to her, including the lieutenant governor. Just to quickly hi- go back and highlight, um, some of the activities that have been done. Um, Val, sorry, Val on the committee wanted to do something new this year, which was a kickoff picnic, family picnic this summer. So you can see across at Kodiak. Yeah, we had three generations, uh, of multiple families, um, as part of the kickoff. And some new families came and were welcomed into the, into the circle. Uh, this, here's an example of a Saturday morning at the high school, making fry bread and learning about the history and the traditions always. Val, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, this is, um, Shani Hunt, a graduate of Columbia Heights School District. I forget what year, but he's pretty young compared to me.
Very recent.
Yeah, very recent.
We're thinking ninety-three.
Yeah, and he, um, it's interesting because Shani loves coming here. He loves coming to Columbia Heights School District. He's spoken in, um, in the World, it's the American Indian History Courses. Um, he's showing us how to make a red willow into tobacco. Um, and, um, you can see the little kids looking so carefully and watching him. Um, he's going to actually do this again on Monday. Um, we're going to be having a family event Monday. The, the kids and the parents have asked for this again, so I'm certainly not going to disappoint them, even though some of them have seen it before. So we're planning this for Monday. Shani also comes in and, like I said, speaks with the high school students and he's just, he's just been here for whatever we need from him. He's a great guy. Powwow, he is a powwow MC. Yeah, he's, and this is another one of our, oh, the man, the man standing behind him is another one of our parent advisory committee members. Um, he's new as of last year. He, yeah, he's, and he's, um, he's, he's been really helpful. It's kind of nice to have a man on the, on the parent advisory committee. Just had to fill that in.
Each year at our powwow, we recognize, um, the graduating seniors. Um, and Val, uh, presents them with an eagle feather that is embroidered with beads, Columbia Heights colors, so the blue and gold. Um, and there's a ceremony that goes along with that, really exciting, really powerful. And we talked about the conference, so if there are any questions or comments.
I guess, can I say a couple more things?
Of course.
Um, also coming up this year, we're planning on some, on storytelling. Everybody, anybody is welcome, by the way, you know, for one of these events, if you want to come. We're planning on storytelling with an elder woman. Um, this year, we've had Shani do it before, but I think I'm going to invite an elder woman this year, just to have a difference because they acted out a little different than Shani does. Um, storytelling in the Indian community is only when the snow is on the ground and it's very, um, interactive, you know, so it's ki- it's pretty fun. Um, and then I'm also working with the govern, uh, the lieutenant governor's office because I'd like to bring, um, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan in to speak to the whole school. Um, I just don't know how, so I'll have to work with, yeah, we're working on that right now. I'd kind of like to do it before the legislature starts again in February. Um, the other thing that I'm working on is I've got nine girls in high schools signed up for making ribbon skirts. Um, and so if anybody sews and is interested in wanting to sew, you're welcome, just give me a holler, I'll, I'll hook you up. Um, the girls, I, I was really surprised to find that these high school girls were interested in, because they don't really have encore at high school. But I've been meeting with the high school kids, I'm, I'm at the high school two days a week, Mondays and Tuesdays, and these girls are interested in making ribbon skirts. And that just floors me that these, you know, the girls, it's something cultural that they want to do. So, um, I'm really looking forward to working on that probably in January when it's called out and.
I'll just, I'll, can I just clarify? We were not offering an American Indian-specific encore class at the high school, but they do have, they do have other encore classes.
Yeah, they do, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, just to clarify.
And then, um, I also, a- as you probably know, I, I go to, on the elementary schools once a month. Um, and I, this, this Friday, I actually will be at Valley View. So if you don't see me, it's over here, I'm at one of the elementary schools, working with the kiddos that call me Ms. Val. So thank you very much for your time and listening.
Anybody have any questions?
I love it here. I, I love working here.
Thank you.
We love you being here.
That's a question, it's not a question, it's a thank you. Thank you for all you did.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next we'll be going over the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Um, this evening, Disa Fabek, our research and assessment coordinator, is here to, um, present information on, we finally have the draft for you in the board packet, on the one-year extension Joint Powers Agreement for Summer Academy. Of course, the mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the, the focus of this presentation, um, in terms of core values, is collaboration and integrity. Uh, so this evening, we'll be presenting information and we'll be back, um, seeking governance to approve the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement one-year extension, and that will take place on November twenty-sixth. Um, so, if you want to. Uh, Summer Academy, this is a proposal of a one-year extension and the rationale for that, as mentioned previously, is to explore the idea of an, or an option of a second site. So Columbia Heights Public Schools has been the fiscal and, and physical host for, um, decades and it has really grown by leaps and bounds and at capacity. And so the board is looking at, um, the option of having, uh, another site kind of on the east side of the metro area. Um, so during this time, this school year, the Summer Academy Executive Committee and Board members will determine the feasibility of the additional site. So that means that, um, each of the twelve school boards will be presented with the results of that committee work this spring, spring of twenty-twenty, to see if a second site will happen or not. Typically, um, Summer Academy has a three-year Joint Powers Agreement. So in the spring, we'll be back with either a Joint Powers Agreement for three years for one site or two, so depending on the study. Um, so just some logistical pieces, over the summer, um, the Summer Academy Legal Council, um, took the existing and really, um, just kind of reviewed the existing and made some changes in order for it to be a one-year, um, extension. That was presented to the Summer Academy Board Meeting in October and then presented to the superintendents of the twelve districts on November first. Based on those meetings, there were some recommendations for changes, lively discussion at the superintendent meeting, um, so I hear. And, um, so some of the recommendation, recommended changes are, um, removing of the phrase "high potential", really to make it crystal clear that, um, the program is for identified students in GT or gifted. Um, adding the language rigorous enrichment opportunity or rigorous educational program for district identified students. And then adding the preference for that, the designee on the board, the Summer Academy Board, have an administrative license. Some of the entities, like Columbia Heights, which is the fiscal host and the physical host, have two representatives. So Disa, who coordinates our gifted programs in the district, and then me serving as the board and executive. Um, and then the fourteen to twelve districts, there was a holdover from many years ago. We didn't have any districts leave. We've just, for the last many, many years, had twelve districts and it was a typo or a holdover from, from previous, so they corrected that. So those are, um, the changes to the Joint Powers Agreement and that's reflected in the draft that you have. Um, so again, here, just to provide information, and we'll be back on November twenty-sixth seeking governance.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, Disa.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Disa.
Okay, next up would be Hennepin Theater Trust Collaborative Partnership.
Sorry.
It's worth the wait.
This is riveting, isn't it?
Hate it when everybody's watching.
I know, it's making me more stressed out. Well, now we'll know it's really Dan.
Okay.
All right. Share with the whole board.
I might as well. How about that?
Great.
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Um, tonight, I am elated to have before me, um, staff from the Hennepin Theater Trust Foundation. Um, to my right, in the far end, is President/CEO, Mr. Mark Nierenhausen. And to my right, immediate right, is Spotlight Education Curriculum Manager, Mr. Pete Tedrow. And tonight's presentation on Hennepin Theater Trust is, is information only, there is no governance. I have Principal Koeman with me as well, as he's participating in the Hennepin Theater Trust program as well, and I'll get into that in a minute. And as you know, our mission here is all be, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner and all belong and all succeed. Tonight, our core values that I would like to, um, hit on tonight is excellence and, and collaboration. About a month ago, I received a phone call from Pete and I think we've all known a little bit about Hennepin Theater Trust program with the Spotlight Theater, with our program. And we've won numerous awards and, uh, talking to Pete even tonight, we believe that we've participated in the Spotlight program for our theater for over ten years. So we're excited that we, we, we've known about the program, but they have many different program offerings, uh, through Hennepin Theater. And it goes from a production assessment, master classes, the Spotlight Showcase, um, inclusive theater opportunities, the Disney Musical in the schools. As you can see on the PowerPoint, we have Valley View Elementary participating in that. We have the Broadway Experience and the Triple Threat and Jimmy Award competitive competitions and the Spotlight Community Ticket Program. So, how this program, how our conversation started was Pete said you belong to the Spotlight program uh, through, through your theater productions. We are wondering if you are aware of the other programs that we have. And I started talking to Pete a little bit about our New York seminar trip and the experiences that our students receive from that and the experience of being able to attend a, a Broadway production. And Pete said, you're not going to believe this, but I might have an opportunity for you, for your students. So Pete came out, we've talked about, um, the, the assessment, the master classes, where our students can have artists come out and participate with our students and help educate our students in our theater program, which we are looking to take advantage of. The other program is, of course, our, our Spotlight Showcase, the Triple Threat. I believe last, not last year, two years ago, we had a student who was, uh, a participant in the Triple Threat. We're excited about that. And then we have the Spotlight Community Ticket Program. And what that program is, it's an opportunity for our school to receive a number of tickets to a potential up to three shows, um, down in the, over at the Orpheum. And the shows, um, range from The Phantom of the Opera, Blue Man Group, My Fair Lady. And those are, if, if the tickets are available, we're able to do that. And, uh, we are fortunate enough to get the tickets for Phantom of the Opera and we have forty-six students attending that program on November twentieth, as you heard earlier. So we're really excited to partner with Peter and, uh, Mr. Nierenhausen about the Hennepin Trust program. The last piece that Peter brought up is, there is also the Disney Musical in the schools. And we are super excited to be able to go down and create little theater artists in our school district and thought of a great opportunity to, uh, not only participate and collaborate, but what an opportunity to work with Disney Musical in our schools. And I don't know, Jason, if you'd like to speak a little bit about how that implementation's going to go.
So we are, are super excited for the opportunity. Um, I've been, um, seeking out ways to enhance our music program at Valley View and feed into the middle school and the high school. Um, and Principal Robleski came to me and said, I have an opportunity for you. Okay, what do you have? Um, so we had the discussion and he introduced me to Pete. Um, and we've had some meetings and we were able to incorporate this into our encore classes. Uh, we had three volunteers that have stepped up. Um, our music departments, uh, Our music departments, I put them to work. We're having a few more concerts, some, some other community events to bring in more family engagement. But three other of our teachers who had experience with musicals have stepped up and, and volunteered to lead it. So we are super excited. We will be putting on a production come May 24th, I believe, and also be, have the opportunity to go down to the Pentagius Theater and work with four other schools that have been accepted into this partnership to put on a production. So we, we couldn't be more happy and thankful.
So just kind of in closing, I'd like to turn it over to, to Pete and Hennepin Theater Trust, but the opportunity that our kids are, are being able to benefit from Hennepin Theater Trust, we can't thank you enough for picking us as a partner in your programs. And we are super excited that our students now have one more opportunity to put their, their hearts in the arts. And as we talked earlier, a lot of our students, we seem to really focus about performance maybe on the athletic fields. And we have seen the benefits of our students who have different talents that are able to perform on, in front of and behind the scenes in theater. And we've, we've, we've really seen our students grow and prosper in our schools and onto their post-secondary training and education. So we want to thank the Hennepin Theater Trust for giving us this opportunity. We are super excited and elated that we have been chosen as one of your partners.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to, to Dan and to Jason and the school district. You know, we can't do what we do without you, without partners like you. Spotlight reaches around 8,000 students in over 100 schools across the state, and we're so happy that Columbia Heights is one of those schools and has been for a decade. And I think we're, we're really about creating positive change through the arts and, and helping our schools achieve their missions and, and their core values. And so we're just about supporting you, and so without you, we can't do this. So thank you for that. And thank you for Jason for hopping on board as one of our Disney musicals in schools, elementary schools. We have four elementary schools that are participating. It's a brand-new program in our market. We, in fact, I'm, I'm, I spent my day being trained by Disney today. So we had, I think, 14 teaching artists and our department of four in Spotlight Education, actually five. And we've spent all day yesterday and today and the next two days learning about helping elementary schools put on a musical. And our teaching artists are going to come to Valley View and they're going to teach the Valley View staff how to do this themselves. And, and over the course of this 17-week program that they will be at Valley View, by the end, Jason, your staff are going to be in charge. They're going to be running the show.
They're very excited.
They're excited. And then next year, next year, it's sort of a, we provide the teaching artist program. Next year, they're a little bit more on their own and they get some, some special seminar help. And then the third year of the program, they just do it. They make it happen. So we're, we're super excited to have, have Disney as a partner and in town and to, to be able to take all of those exciting opportunities to our elementary schools that will hopefully feed to Dan and the students at the high school when, when they, when they get up there and want to, want to get on stage and hopefully make it to Spotlight Showcase. So thank you again for being a partner, and Dan's been fabulous and, and Jason has been amazing. So we, we appreciate being a part of Spotlight Education and Hennepin Theater Trust. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I seldom have questions, but I just want to say thank you, guys. I mean, as, as a parent of a couple theater students throughout the course of their education here, I've had the opportunity to come down to a couple of the Spotlight performances where you bring all the kids from all these different schools together, and it's a extremely well-organized chaos. Watching the different, the different groups coming out, and you're taking kids that have never performed together and all these different things, and, and bringing them all together and, and it being a phenomenal performance. So thank you for what you do for the kids and the opportunities that you create for them. I think it's really cool. I didn't know anything, I mean, I knew about the Disney thing, but I didn't realize it was a, a progressive thing, you know, you know, over the course of the next three years. That's really nice. And we have a strong theater program in our middle school, and if we can get these kids in an elementary school environment, you know, on a more structured level, I think that that's going to make that program stronger, which is going to help to build the high school program as well. So thank you for reaching out to us or however it came to be. I think this is exciting all the way around for all of our kids in the district, so thank you.
I just want to echo what, what Pete and everyone else said and add my thanks to it because the mission of the school really fits with what we're trying to do. Hennepin Theater Trust has a lot of resources and assets and connections in the field, but we can't do anything with them without partners that share our values. And, and it's to the point that you just made, this isn't just about the performance on stage, it's about much deeper values. It's about what this does for the students. We're, our students are entering a career environment that's based on creativity and innovation, and that's what the arts provide. It's not just the performance skills, but it really helps bring out that creativity, that innovation, that sense of collaboration. And so those are the values that inspire us to get into the arts and do what we do, and those are the values that attract us to a partnership like this. So you have our gratitude and thanks for letting us have a vehicle to express shared values that benefit this community. Thank you.
Certainly keep us in mind if any more great opportunities like this come up.
We know who our friends are. We don't forget our friends.
I think Superintendent would like to make a comment.
I really make comments either, but I just have to say, as the superintendent and speaking for the staff, that we talk many times about having our hearts in the arts. And I personally think a lot about, we are right across the street from Minneapolis. We're in the shadow of many things, but our students never have the opportunity to walk across the street or to actually experience something like the Hennepin Theater Trust, the Broadway District. And just the very fact that we have the President/CEO and you, the Spotlight Director, here this evening gives me goosebumps because we've been talking about this for years. So you may, I don't want to tear up about it, but I, I really do think, not only giving them, creating positive change for kids, but, and for our school district, but for creating worlds of opportunity for where this may take our students and our staff as they emerge into these new leaders in the arts. It's always great to have pre-professional performing artists mix with and see real-life productions. You sometimes get a peek behind the curtain backstage, but also to experience it in a real theater as audience building. And you know, you never know when there's going to be that one child, whether it's a Valley View student when we do the Disney production, or it's the high school student that looks at that stage and says, I want to do that too. And isn't that just wonderful? So thank you for making dreams come true for us, both now and in the future. I look forward to seeing the May presentation if we're invited. And I just look forward to just years of opportunity working with you all. So thank you so much. It means the world to us as a staff. Thank you.
And you're all invited to the, the Inspired Chaos?
Extremely organized chaos.
Because that is a, you're absolutely right. It's a phenomenal performance to see that energy level, the quality level. It's, if you haven't witnessed it, you got to be there. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, guys. Thank you very much. Okay, building vision card for the high school, soon as Dan's ready.
Dan is going one minute because he never stops.
A little filler.
I think the ultimate dad joke I heard related to Halloween was, why did the scarecrow win an award? He was outstanding in his field.
That's lovely. Thank you.
Thank goodness you're back. Maddie was telling jokes. I appreciate it. Building vision card for the high school.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Principal Robleski and I are here this evening to present the new metrics for the strategic roadmap at Columbia Heights High School. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And this encompasses all of the core values because it's the strategic directions. With that, Principal Robleski, oh, sorry. This is informational item, so there will be no governance. And just a reminder, we have updated the strategic roadmap, 2019 through 2024, gone through the work at the board level and the community level. And so these are the baseline metrics for this new strategic roadmap.
So I believe there's seven slides with matrix that I'm going to go over tonight. I'd like to highlight some, and then at the end, I'll take some questions, if you don't mind. On our first slide, we're talking about improving students' experience and school climate. And we've had, in our first two areas, we're talking about wellness and health professional development with our licensed staff and teacher absences. From the year before, we've seen no change in neither one of those categories. In the next category, under student attendance, we're at the baseline within the percentages. And one thing that I'd like to point out is the baseline for attendance defined by the, by MDE has really become rigid over the last year. And so that attendance, if parents are taking students out for an excused absence for an appointment, it is not counted as an excused absence. So we have been asking our parents to make sure as we look at, at the new definitions of attendance, that we're really mindful when we're planning to take our students out of school. One thing else that we've done as we're, we're working on attendance is at the high school, we've worked with our, our new social worker in implementing, looking at data on truancy and unexcused absences to make sure that we're getting the most accurate data as possible, but in turn, really offering assistance to our, our students and our families on any interventions we can do to help them have better attendance. So that's one area of focus that we'll be working on.
I'm just going to add that because this is baseline data and we're able to review it, one area of growth is ensuring that we're providing that health and wellness professional development to staff. So less than 50% of the high school staff last year took or was, were offered or were able to participate in that professional development. And so this year, through our district and services, it will be at 100% of staff participating in that type of professional development. So this is really an opportunity for us to see where we're at and grow in very specific places.
The next area is our, our school climate. And as you can see, students reporting satisfaction with school climate. We did our school's focus groups last year, and one thing that we really found out is that kids are really embracing real expectations and are, are really seeing a difference and an impact, not only in our classrooms, but throughout our whole building, as students are able to focus more on their academics. One thing to point out, and again, this is from last year, is why we weren't at vision is students did make reference. One of the complaints that they had was our school lunch program. And that was a, that was a complaint that we did see last year from a lot of our students. And I point that out in the fact that the district has taken initiatives and action on that for the high school. And we have seen, so that's an area of concern, but we've seen huge improvements at the high school right now with our school lunch. We're working with our, our free breakfast program, but we've, we've had some positive, positive changes in our lunch program at the, at the high school, and we're very excited to continue to see those improvements. So we're excited that, that's been addressed. I think another area of focus is our out-of-school suspension incidences. As you can see, they're vision. We're really excited to report that our number of suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, were under 25 last year. And I attribute that to our staff and our administrative team and collaborating with our parents to do numerous interventions prior to when we get to that point of a suspension. And I would point out that these are, the suspensions that our students are getting are suspendable offenses that are not going to be looked at as, that they've had something done to receive the, the suspension. The next area that we're, the in-school suspension, again, is, is a focus of ours. It's less, we do not, we really get our kids in the classroom and we really focus on, on academics at the high school. So we really feel good on, on where we're at with, with behaviors at the high school. The next area is personalized learning. We're excited, we've had, all of our, our teachers are either on Moodle, Google Classroom, and this year, Schoology. We've had, this year, we have a year to migrate our, our other management systems over into Schoology. So we're excited for, or Google Classroom, and we're really excited to continue to see that migration of the use of Schoology at the high school. So we, we are in the vision area there. Again, we are moving over to Schoology at the high school. When we talk about post-secondary academic portfolios, this is an area where all of our students use Naviance and are on Naviance. So I would say that if you looked at that portfolio, that we're in the vision area. But most of our students, students who are using this as a portfolio is in that baseline area. So as they're making plans for post-secondary education, we need to get past that baseline and move forward, and I think we're doing that with the, our advanced placement dean, our, our college and career-ready focused dean at the high school. So we're excited to see some growth in that area as well. And then again, the B1 where we're at intervention with Khan Academy, this was last year. We introduced Khan Academy, and Khan Academy, if I'm correct, this number is based off of 10th and 11th grade students only who were introduced to Khan Academy last year. On our, our next slide on our matrix is, as you know, where our PSAT and our SAT and ACT scores are not where they want to be. We still have some work in that area. We're aware of that, but what we are excited about is if you look down, the number of students that are taking the SAT or PSAT or ACT is over 90%. We continue to push all of our students to be college-ready and that we can take that test. We do not op, we do not ask students to op out. We ask and, and we press our students all to take that test. This year, it'll be the SAT, and we expect all of our 11th graders to be there that day and take that test. So as you can see, we're at vision of over 90% of our students are doing that, and we are really proud at the high school for advanced placement courses, that 30 to 49% of our students, I'm not, I can't remember the exact number.
Are taking a course and, and the exam within that, I believe, yeah.
So that's, that's 10th and 10th through 12 that are taking the exam. And each year, the total number of students enrolled in an AP class and the total number of tests keep increasing each and every year. So we're excited about that. Just some of the tools that we have, Student View. We have 95, over 95% of our students using Student View. One thing that we do in the halls is as we're doing a passing time, we're asking kids to pull out their phones and look up their Student View and check with their grades. And kids are knowing that if you're in the main hallway, you better have your phone ready because you'll get called to check out Student View and your grades. An area that, and I think that really goes back to, as you'll see, one of the initiatives that we had this year was a redesign to our advisory, and we believe that our advisory program, we believe that is attributed to that redesign of the number of students on Student View. And we continue to work with our parents to make sure that they have access to Parent View as well. Our teachers are email blasting. Our teachers are email blasting on Synergy. I don't know if some of you, if your students have, if you're getting those emails, you should be getting those emails. It's just a quick snapshot of what's happening in the classroom and assignments and what tests might be coming up. So we've encouraged our teachers to do that. And we continue to do principal all calls on Sunday nights at 6 o'clock. Family engagement, one area that we've really focused on is we've seen value when we double up on some events at the high school. We usually do, we had our conferences and we had NHS night. And we've seen an increase in parent involvement or in attendance at both conference and NHS. We've also done a number of partnering up with our AP parent night, which is a requirement, and as well as our ARCC program night. So we partner up on those evenings so parents can hit multiple events in one night. And then the last one is, as you can see, we're excited that our parents are returning mandatory forms. We ask that our parents do it in a timely fashion. And then as you can see here, departments are using PLC times, grade level, common planning time. We have Highlander time at the high school where we're using our PLC times. Teachers are taking advantage of that. And then we are focusing our curriculum to meet the standards and making sure that our state standards align with our common assessments that we are working on at the high school. And then I know a director, so Sunstrom would be very happy to see that. We believe our vision and our budgets are in line, and we continue to work on that. So goals at the high school. This year, our focus at the high school is focused note-taking. That's not only do we, are we teaching our students how to take certain types of notes, but we're showing them how to apply those notes as they prepare for a test. It's kind of the why are we taking notes? We're telling, we're educating our students in the why and then how to apply. And we're also doing a school-wide math intervention in linear math. And that is within our departments, our students will be getting an infusion in November here and for the rest of the year, two times a month, they will be getting this. That is related to each one of the areas in the classroom that the teachers are teaching. We continue to work on course alignment with our PLCs. And we're excited this year for equity within our classrooms, doing a book club and working on microaggressions within our classrooms. And then I talked earlier about our redesign of our advisory. We have asked our teachers what grade they would like to work with. And they've done some redesigning of the curriculum, of ramp up to readiness with the University of Minnesota, as well as Naviance, Khan Academy, and just making sure that our students are best prepared. Celebrations, each and every year, we will hear more and more of our kids receiving awards. This is, this is kind of a new award that our students received this year. They were down at the Minnesota State High School Press Association Awards. That's kind of the news media outlet and the paper, digital and paper. That's their state tournament. And this year, HNN, our news network, Digital, received fourth place for best show and broadcasting. The Heights Herald won three awards, all in fourth place for best featured print, best featured photo, and best editor's review. So we're excited that our students are really flourishing in those areas. And one area that we always are proud of is our graduation rate. As we always know, at the high school, you know, it's okay to admit where you're at. It's not okay to stay there. We like to celebrate some of the data of our students and their graduating, graduating in the graduation rate. But we always want to make sure that we understand that we always have growth in those areas. But we are really excited in some of our student data that shows we're doing all right in some areas, but always need to grow.
Just a quick note, the graduation rate is always a year behind release by the state. That's why it's 2018. So just to clarify.
Questions? Questions?
Random, are you seeing higher participation in lunch at the high school? And my kids, I mean, particularly have said it's better. So, but are you seeing higher participation or do you not know yet?
I don't know, we are, we have an increase. The one thing that it's very, we're seeing an increase in the last couple of weeks. I think we're even seeing an uptick. And this might seem real silly, but the students made a request for seasoning because they're saying the food is bland. And when you talk to students, you say, well, you're cooking for a thousand, you don't need to make it hot and spicy because maybe only 50 of you like it hot and spicy. But what the food service has done is they've purchased different seasonings and they've displayed them on a table and the kids are using them. And we're seeing an increase in participation just with something as simple as seasoning. And our food service heard, they listened, and they presented to the students. And we might sit here and roll our eyes about lunch, but lunch is probably one of the most important times of the day for any student. It's an opportunity to feed themselves, gives them time to rest, and just talk with their friends, to have a meal and be able to season the meal the way they want it. It just adds joy. And what we always say is when you can hear the level go up, that's a good thing. And so we're hearing that and we're excited. Our food service is listening to our kids' requests and we're seeing some growth. An area that we want to move on, we've had growth, is in our free breakfast program. But we're still looking for more growth in that, that area.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dan. And Zena. Next up, Strategic Direction C.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, Director Frye and Director Stunkel are here with me to present on Strategic Direction C. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Strategic Direction C really focuses on community and collaboration. And this is an informational presentation. So again, looking at the new strategic roadmap for 2019, 2024. And just a reminder that this will be baseline data this year. The process for creating the strategic plan involved community input, also input from staff, students, and parents. Then determining the areas of focus for continuous improvement and then creating the new metrics. So I believe we're going to start with communications, yes?
Yes. So the, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Good to be here to talk about the communications aspect of the strategic direction. The first one is our annual communication survey that was done in the spring. And that's really an area for us to grow. I believe that with the communications audit that we participated in this fall, that that's going to give us some really good information that we're going to be able to act on and come up with a communications plan. Because we'd really like to see movement from that high-concern area. And that's, that was compiled by a number of different questions on the survey about the different ways in which people are communicated, some of which comes from the communications department, some of which comes from the buildings within staff. So it involves multiple questions on that communication survey, but we are going to be working on improving that area. In terms of the analysis of social media engagement, we've really seen an increase in the percentage of people that are participating with our social media accounts, Twitter, Facebook, the superintendent's Instagram, and our YouTube. So we are, we've exceeded the vision mark for that. We also have hit the vision mark for the points of contact, push out to internal stakeholders by the communications department. So that is within the internal stakeholders, that would be employees of the school district. And we've created a page on our website that is private just for people that are staff so that staff information isn't shared widely with the public. So that's, so it's both posting on that Heights net, but it's also emails within the district. And then the points of contact with external stakeholders, that would be community members and parents and such. And there also, we have more than 15 points of contact per month. Submitted press releases, we have more than 11 per month. And then also, the press releases that have been published, it looks like it's a little cut off there. We have points of contact. So press releases would be both full articles. They would also be, we submit to the press, to our local newspapers in their calendar section, different events that we have going on. We've submitted advertisements. We currently, I am one of our local news sources, have an advertisement about the pre-K and K registration nights that are coming up. And then they also have online. And we have approximately 12.6 monthly published mentions. And that's, that's the communications page. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I have the honor to talk about the first two metrics here. And the first one is parents' registration for online tools, specifically Seesaw and others for pre-K 5 to 5. We're right in the progressing area. We have 75% on average between our three elementary schools of one parent participating in one of the, in Seesaw specifically, and having them signed up to receive that information. The second metrics there is parents registered for online tools, Parent View and others. And we're in intervention. Right now, we've got about 44% of our K, sorry, 6 to 12 students with their parents who are signed up for Parent View. So we've got a little work to do to get up to 50% and to get to at a minimum baseline by next year and to ensure that we're communicating and parents have access to Parent View so they can look at grades and get that information.
The next two measures are from the climate survey that we conduct annually. And so we definitely have room for improvement on the number of parents that are participating in the survey. Last year, when we held the survey, we, you know, sent out links in a variety of areas. We tried to have computers available at school events. And so the team will, is reconvening to talk about when, this spring, when we're pushing out the parent survey again, we really want to hear from parents and want a bigger sample size so that we're getting a well-rounded input and look at how people are feeling. So the pool of parents that did participate in the climate survey for the last metric there are expressing a sense of connectedness and engagement. Of course, they're the ones who are participating as well. So this is one measure. And definitely, I think that's a great area for us to grow in, in terms of reaching out to all of the different communities within our school district. So overall, the score is there at the level four. And again, this is the first year that we're using this new metric. So next year, there'll be two needles.
Any questions?
How does the climate survey in general get out? Do you send like an email to all the parents? Like, is that how?
It's done through each of the schools. So, you know, the idea is that if a principal's sending it out, you know, whether it's on a phone call, the email, newsletter, that it's a little bit more personal and that people will respond to it. So yeah, it's done by the school level. And we pick certain grade levels for students to do the, complete the climate survey, but we send it out to all parents.
Okay.
It also comes in Spanish and English. So we'll try, you know, we're trying, it's an area of growth.
Yeah, great.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next up, John, looks like we've got special education compliance.
All right. Chair Larkin, school board members, or members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm John Frye, I'm the director of special ed. I'm here to talk about everybody's favorite subject, special ed compliance. This is a follow-up from some information I shared with you in, I believe it was February or March of 2019. And so this is information. So again, our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. And the two areas that I, of core values that I'd like to focus on is excellence and integrity. Because again, a lot of this due process is done with the integrity of our students at heart and with the staff using their best judgment to make decisions and with parent input. So again, like I noted, the purpose of this presentation is to give you some information on compliance, specifically due process as well as fiscal. And then we'll talk about the plan for this year for our MDE review. So as I noted, back in the spring of 2019, we are in the process of our six-year cycle here for, on the MDE review. And we get the honor of having MDE come out and visit us this upcoming spring in 2020. And we are in our MDE review year. And so what we have done thus far, I'm going to share basically what I've done, we've done this far, what we're doing right now, and then what we're going to be doing in the future. So due process compliance. So what have we done so far? The special ed department, myself and Marcia have met with the lead monitor, and we have reviewed, coordinated, and planned kind of their visits and what they're going to be doing through MDE. We've also looked at a review of student lists. They give us a list of probably about 60 or 70 students, and we whittle that down. And we've got about 19 students that we're really focused on for our self-review over the course of October, November, and December here to make sure that we're in compliance with the state standards. The other thing is we've got a building and staff summary form, or the BAS. And basically, that is a form given to us by MDE in that we look at the roles and the number of staff at each building to make sure it's in compliance. And then from there, they give us kind of a list of how many staff we need, a predetermined list of who we need to interview, which we're doing here this month. So what are we doing right now? We are in the process of doing a record review. So they've whittled our list down to 19 students. And so we are working with the staff to review those records to make sure they are meeting the compliance standards. They've given us a review checklist, and we go through that to make sure that it's in compliance. And if it's not, we mark it that it's not in compliance. And then over the course of the next few months, we have time to make sure that we're meeting those compliance standards from the, from the information that we have. The other thing that we're doing this month is the staff online interviews. And again, what's noted here is that surveys are completed by a predetermined number of staff, whether that's general ed, special ed, related service providers, educational assistants, and what have you. I sent that interview out, yeah, it's an online interview, and I sent that out at the beginning of November. And so far, we've exceeded our sample size for educational assistants. We needed 29, we have 35 respondents. General educations, teachers, we have exactly 51, which is what we need. And special ed teachers, we've exceeded the 25 that we needed, we're up to 29 so far. So we're getting good feedback, and we're working with our administrators and related services to make sure we have a good sample size to kind of reflect what we're doing and if there's some things that we need to be working on that the monitor will be sharing with us this spring. So what does it look like? So that's what we're doing now. So what does it look like in the future? In February, I have the opportunity to complete an interview for, with our monitor. So that should be fun. Also, we get the opportunity, so we submit our record review information by January 1st, so it'll be done before December 23rd. But we give that to them, and then they come back to us and they give us two months to clean up kind of those things that we have self-reviewed ourselves to say, oh, we really need to work on this. And so we get to clean that up through having IEP meetings, to ensuring, you know, we're getting things out on time and looking at our timelines and what have you. So we get the opportunity to kind of clean that up for the January and February. My, my hope and my thought is that we will not have a whole lot to clean up, but we will see. And then we have, again, the monitor's coming the week of March 2nd. She'll be here for three days. Her birthday is actually Thursday, so we get to celebrate her birthday week with her. So that'll be really good. But she'll be conducting an onsite review of our district's facilities. She'll be following up on the interview and then making sure the environments that we have for special ed students are meeting the state standards, which they are. And then after her visit at the beginning of April, which is April Fool's Day, ironically, is that we get a formal notification of findings that talk about kind of the, from our self-review, what kind of has been updated, what we noted from our self-review, how we fixed it, and then kind of what their findings are. And then June 30th, we get a re-final monitoring report from MDE. And if there are any issues in corrective action plans that are needed, we would write those at that time. And that's in the, in the course of July and August, how we write those up if we need those. The one thing that I want to say is I've shared with the staff to think positive. We do- We do good work, we are in compliance, we write good IEP goals. We write stuff that is meeting the compliance standards if not exceeding it. And so we need to think positively with that and ensure that we are, one, continuing that and enhancing our practice too, if there's changes that we need to make. Um, then that's due process. The other piece is the fiscal compliance and that's something that we finished um, last year. And so what I noted earlier is that we had um, data was submitted during the seventeen eighteen school year and they, they based it on the, the year previous, the sixteen seventeen, for fourteen areas or items. And um, June of, of twenty eighteen, um, MDE identified that we had eleven items or areas that we needed to work on that weren't in compliance. We had a corrective action plans. And so through the course of the year, I worked with a director, with Denise and um, the director of finance. And um, we worked on making sure that we were in compliance, which we are, we are. But over the course of basically the eighteen nineteen school year, up until June twenty nineteen, um, we completed that. For those who are curious, these were the eleven areas and items that we were not, what we, the information we had submitted didn't meet MDE's requirements, so. And again, they're kind of broken down into five areas, time and effort. So looking at staff schedules, making sure that they're in line with working with special ed students, transportation, making sure that it's noted in the IEP if we are providing special ed transportation, procurement, making sure that we're meeting those internal and external standards, equipment, making sure that if we are buying something, we're recording and inventorying it. And then proportional share, work with um, private schools and making sure that we're get, we get funding for that. So making sure that we're providing that service, um, as well as the books and what have you for them. And so, you know, as of June twenty eighth, uh, June twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, we had completed these and we are considered by MDE in a hundred percent fiscal compliance. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Uh, the police liaison contract, Denise.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. You have in your packet the school liaison officer program contract. And um, I don't have a PowerPoint, I just have the agreement in the um, board packet. And this is a program that's a giant powers between the city of Columbia Heights and ISD thirteen. And this program has been in place for a number of years. I think since the eighties, nineteen eighty. So um, the actual agreement that's in your, in your board packet is the same. The contract language is the same, nothing has changed. The total costs do reflect the um, new wages and um, fringe costs for the calendar twenty twenty year. And they put a three percent increase on the training costs, equipment and other related expenses. So overall, it's only a five percent increase from twenty nineteen. So this agreement would be for Columbia Academy um, and the high school. So it's from January twenty twenty to December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And this is just for information tonight and I'll be bringing it back on November twenty-sixth for approval in action. And if you have any um, questions, I can write them down or try to answer them and ask um, the police department before next, next meeting.
Any questions on that?
I have one question. Um, is the increases within our budget projections?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? See you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, move on to our action items. First up will be the annual report.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Executive Director Stenvik and I presented at the last school board meeting our draft of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual report. The annual report's an opportunity for us to share our progress on the world's best workforce goals and highlights from the previous year with our community. If approved tonight, we would be mailing the annual report out to community members as well as posting it on our website for all. So we're here tonight seeking approval of the content of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual report.
Okay, we'll start with the motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Molly, we'll open up for discussion. Any questions or comments?
Uh, make one comment again. I, I know we talked about this before when it was prevent, presented last time to us, but I do appreciate um, just taking into consideration the feedback that we've presented. And I really continue to like our, our goals and strategies um, that we're including um, in the, in the report as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, here are no further discussion or approval for the annual report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up would be the local seven-ten teacher agreement.
Um, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here to present tonight for approval, uh, the teacher's contract, which we settled, I don't know, probably a month ago, four to six weeks ago. And we have discussed it with you uh, numerous times over the course of um, the negotiation period over the last uh, six months or so, uh, in closed session and um, have discussed um, our strategies and, and goals during that time. So uh, the tentative agreement that we're presenting to you for approval is a salary increase in the first year of two percent. In the second year, two and a half percent. And that's on the main schedule. And as you know, um, there is a, a separate ECFE schedule. And the tentative agreement there is two and six percent in years one and two respectfully, respectively. The other main, um, excuse me, I think the cold weather has gotten to me. Changes um, are in the health insurance. We've agreed to a five percent increase in the district contribution for the first year in health insurance and a three percent in the second year um, of, uh, just for health insurance. Dental did not change. And that's for both family and single insurance. For O three B, managing contribution of the district um, is increased ten percent. In each of the three, there are three categories, um, based upon years of service to the district. Then also longevity, a slight increase, um, which hasn't been increased for a while, from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, which is on an annual basis. And then extracurricular, um, no changes in the base amount of the extracurricular schedule in the year, in the first year of the contract. But in the second year, we agreed to increase it from five thousand seven fifty to six thousand as a, as a base level for each of the activities. And as you know, then there are many, many categories within that extracurricular schedule and there's a percentage assigned to each of the um, positions within the extracurricular schedule, which is based upon the amount of time, number of students and so forth. There were some language changes um, as well, which uh, we've discussed. Maybe I'll just call out a couple. In the ULA, the Unrequested Leave of Absence section, um, there, there is now protection in the contract for tiers three and four over tiers one and two, which is just a reflection of the change a couple of years ago in the statutory um, designation of different licensure tiers. Clarification of, of some language relating to long-term substitute seniority date in the personnel file, um, grading days. We made some changes as required by the federal tax code, um, by adding some VIBA language. Also, um, changes required by the federal tax code in the sick leave conversion. And um, we had um, some changes in the work comp language related to um, assault uh, or injury that might result to a teacher based upon student contact, student conduct. And then a couple of the MOUs that we have are continuing in their current uh, format. Particularly the voluntary prekey funding program, which um, continues to be funded for the next two years, which of course is the duration of this contract. And then the Highlander time at the high school, which is, has been a pilot and, and by all accounts is considered to be very successful. So that is continued in the MOU. So that's essentially the components. I think it was a um, um, a successful negotiations process and in, as measured by um, satisfaction by both parties and in a collaborative process.
Okay, start with the motion to move that forward.
No moved.
Is that Laura?
Second.
And Molly, open it up for discussion, questions? I think the standard question is, is Denise, as far as our, for budgeting purposes, everything is within our comfort level?
Yep, it's in budget, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, here are no further discussion, approving the local seven-ten teacher agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks very much. Thanks for all your hard work, guys. Next up would be board policies, second reading. It is for four oh two disability and non-discrimination policy, four fourteen mandated reporting of child neglect, physical and sexual abuse, four nineteen tobacco-free environment, four twelve gifts to employees. Uh, these policies appeared on the October twenty-second meeting. I guess we'll still, let's put it on the table and then if there's questions, start with a motion.
No moved.
Molly?
Second.
Holla? Questions, comments, discussion? Anybody reached out to Superintendent Kelly?
The answer there is no.
Okay. Anybody else have any question?
I know when we looked at them the first time, there were a couple of typos, I think, in those. Did that get fixed?
Donna's saying yes.
Thank you.
Typos corrected. Anybody else? Okay, here are no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Uh, next up, the school board, in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero three, the board will meet in a closed session for the purpose of discussing, discussing negotiation strategies. Uh, seat forty-six. No, I did put you on camera, no. Alright, you're coming out of closed session. Nine twenty-one, we are in closed session in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero three. The board met in this closed session for the purpose of discussing, discussing negotiation strategies. Board topics. I just have, I talked about it when I did the announcements, but I'd just like to remind everybody. Well, they'll have one school board meeting, uh, December seventeenth, but we do have our joint meeting with the city council on December fifth, which is a Thursday at seven PM. So just ask if you would to make sure you throw that in your calendars. And that's going to be at the library, the public library. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything for board topics?
You know, I just want to say that I believe, and Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the fall play um, is at Highland. And is that coming up Thursday, Friday, is it Thursday, Friday of this, and Saturday of this week or next week? I'll just look at that really quickly because um, we have a change of venue because of the Performing Arts Center. So what I'm just really underscoring is that it's going to be at Highland. It is this week, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, is that right? And it will be at Highland. So it'll be the, the fall play for the high school, but it will be at Highland. And that's the only point I'm trying to make there, so people aren't going to the wrong spot.
That's Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, here are no further board topics, we'll adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two.